All right, good evening, everyone. We want to call the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for July the 8th, 2024 to order. I'd like to welcome each one that's in our audience here this evening, as well as those that are joining us by TV. And our first item of business will be our invocation. We have Priest Rick Smith with us from Amoral and Palative Care. And then we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Robbie Wilkie. So, uh, priest?
Well, good evening, Commissioners, good evening County Manager, County leaders, and distinguished guests. Since we just had Independence Day, I thought it'd be a little bit good to talk about independence and what that is, our independence we have in this great country of ours, but also as citizens of faith. So let me read to you this short article by Canon Mark Eldridge. Several years ago, I decided to stop referring to the holiday we celebrate on July 4th as July 4th. I insisted on calling it by its real name, Independence Day. As Christians, we can sometimes get frustrated with a culture celebrating Santa on Christmas or the Easter Bunny on Easter rather than connecting with their true meanings. Just like Jesus is the reason for the season, on December 25th, the approval of the Declaration of Independence on July 4th, 1776, is the reason for this season. On this day, 248 years ago, the Congress of the 13 United States of America approved this document, giving the reasons why they voted to dissolve their connection to Great Britain two days earlier, on July 2nd, 1776. This is why we celebrate on July 4th, so Happy Independence Day. I also started reading the Declaration of Independence on July 4th each year as a way to celebrate the holiday, sort of like reading the nativity narrative each Christmas or the passion narrative each Easter. I discovered it's a good way to remember what it is we are celebrating and why. Have you ever read through the entire Declaration? It's not long, and it's an amazing read. Even those who are not from the United States can appreciate its historical significance and can appreciate how it connects to the milestones in their own nation's histories. I'm not, however, trying to equate Christmas and Easter to Independence Day. Of course, we as Christians know that our true citizenship is in God's kingdom, to which we give our primary allegiance. But while we are in the already and not-yet time between this age and the age to come, we do participate in the earthly nations that God has placed us in. And I, for one, am grateful to be a citizen of the United States of America. I hope you feel the same. In reading the Declaration of Independence, I realized there was so much more to the decision to declare independence than what I was taught growing up. I was taught that the American Revolution was mostly about economics, with an emphasis on the Boston Tea Party and the notion of taxation without representation. There are actually 27 reasons for declaring independence that were listed, and the one about taxes, which states for imposing taxes on us without our consent, doesn't show up until number 17 on the list. The Senate's leading to those 27 reasons, the history of the present Kingdom of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries, all having indirect object to the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. They are listed clearly and plainly. Two stood out to me most. Number nine, he has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and the amount of payment of their salaries. And number 10, he has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people in either substance. Part of the problem was an unjust system and a bloated, complex bureaucracy. It was not just about economics. I have thought about how similar that sounds to the America I'm living in today in some ways. A quick reading of current headlines might lead you to think the same. Now, I'm not suggesting that America has now become a tyranny, but as a Christian, we know that fall in human nature is meant toward being like God in our own strength and can affect any nation, no matter how noble it's beginning. I am suggesting on this Independence Day and the days after that we celebrate, that we pay close attention to and take seriously the freedoms that the founding fathers gave everything for. Speaking of the Apostles' teachings, the writer of Hebrews 2:1 says, "Therefore, we must pay close attention to what we have heard lest we drift away from it." He goes on to ask, "How shall we escape if we neglect such a great salvation?" While carefully learning and guarding the salvation we received is much greater than the benefits of freedom we have here in America, the same principle applies. Without paying close attention to what we receive, like freedom of speech and freedom of religion, we could easily drift away into tyranny. George Washington once spoke on the freedom of speech and said, "For if men are to be precluded from their offering, their sentiments are a matter which may involve the most serious and alarming consequences that can invite the consideration of mankind. Reason is of no use to us. The freedom of speech may be taken away, and dumb and silent, we may be led like sheep to the slaughter." I once heard Dallas Willard speaking on Isaiah 53:6, "All we, like sheep, have gone astray." Dallas asked a question, "How do sheep go astray?" After a long pause, he gave the answer, "One blade of grass at a time." Isn't that so true? It's true in our own personal spiritual lives. We don't go from one day walking closely with the Lord and the next day being far from Him. That usually happens after we neglect spiritual disciplines, such as prayer, reading of the Bible, worship, and giving. Just a little bit at a time until you're distant from your shepherd and vulnerable to attack. It's true in your local church. Churches that are plateaued or declining didn't get there overnight. It's usually after years of neglecting the Great Commission, only looking inward instead of outward to the lost. Secular humanism and progressivism won't stop trying to infiltrate the church, and if we neglect our responsibility to fight for the truth, one day, years from now, we could wake up and wonder how we lost another denomination. The same principle is true for the country we live in and are blessed to live in. May those of us who are citizens of the United States of America, this Independence Day and season, not neglect remembering. May we give thanks for and continue to fight for the liberties we've been blessed with in this nation and in paying close attention to our earthly citizenship. May we never find ourselves subject once again to tyranny. As a priest and pastor of the Church of Jesus Christ, I am thankful that there are leaders that guide our communities, which understand they need God's wisdom and guidance for the issues and problems we face. The truth is, whether we realize it or not, we all need His wisdom, strength, and mercy. Let us pray. Lord God, by Your providence, our founders won their liberties of old. Grant that we and all the people of this land may have grace to exercise these liberties and righteousness and peace. Heavenly Father, send down on those who hold public office and those who lead here in our county, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please place flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. At this time, are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're going to strike item one from the agenda. There was a scheduling conflict. They'll reschedule for August. Would like to swap items five and six and then add what would have been item 18, which is an approval for fireworks application from the village of Cedar Rock. They were, they submitted all their paperwork in on time, but it got collated with some other things, so we just need to ratify that.
All right. Switching five and six. Got you. All right, hearing the recommendation of the County Manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this evening's agenda as the County Manager has presented.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So, our first item is the naming of an unnamed road. Yes, Micah's here. I thought I saw you earlier. So, yes, sir, Micah.
I moved seats because I was informed the gentleman, number one, wasn't going to be here, so.
Okay.
I swapped seats on you. Good evening, gentlemen. Hope everybody's doing well. So, we are here today to call for the vote of the naming that was introduced in the last meeting. The road name still stands as to Granger Lane.
All right. So, hearing that, I will open the public hearing, and I don't think anyone's here that has signed up to speak, either for or against. So, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask what the pleasure of the board is this evening in adopting this road name, Granger Lane.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We rename this road to Granger Lane.
All right. Any other comment or discussion about that? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that carries. So, thank you, Micah.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks, Micah.
Next is our 2023 tax collector's settlement and 2024 charge to our tax collector, who is with us here this evening, Mr. Josh Angle.
Good evening, Commissioner. The first item is in accordance with General Statute 105, 373A. The total settlement for the outstanding 2023 real and personal property taxes is $1,122,269.67. This settlement is 2.36% of the original levy and leaves a collection rate of 97.64% for the 2023 tax bills. I request this settlement to be accepted and the 2023 taxes to be recharged to the tax collector. The second item is in accordance with General Statute 105, 321 and 352. I request the authorization to collect the 2024 taxes. Such taxes are hereby declared to be a first lien on all real property with respect to taxpayers in the county of Caldwell.
All right. So, hearing the request of Mr. Angle, do we need to do these individually, or can we take a motion to collect them, do it all at one?
I don't see why you couldn't do them together.
All right. So, with that, then, I'll make a motion that we approve what our tax collector, Mr. Josh Angle, has presented as item number one, the collection of the 23 taxes at $1,122,269.57, I think you said.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
That's it.
And then his second request is the authorization for him to be able to carry out and collect the 2024 taxes. So, do we have any other comment or discussion about that? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So, thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
That brings us to item number four. I'm sorry, it'd be item three on our agenda this evening, which is a quasi-judicial hearing, special use permit request. And we have Shelley Stevens, our planning director, with us here this evening, as she's coming to gather herself. I'll be turning the meeting over to our attorney, Mr. David Lackey, to conduct the quasi-judicial hearing. So, Mr. Lackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we're going to open the hearing on the application to, for a special use permit to construct a cell tower or telecommunication tower on property located at 3341 Clark's Chapel Road, Lenore. We have four people, all of whom I understand are here to speak or to give, possibly give testimony in favor of the application. At this time, I'll ask those four people and Ms. Stevens to come up and either be sworn or affirmed if you may want to give testimony. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard with regard to this application? Let the record show that there's no one else here to speak.
Do you affirm that the testimony you give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? This your solemn affirmation? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stevens, we'll begin with you. Tell us what you, want to tell us about the, this application for special use permit, please.
Okay. I'm just going to give an overview as the burden of proving that the applicant meets the zoning ordinance requirements is on the applicant, and that's what their application does, and they may also provide testimony if they'd like, and clearly, they want to do that. So, I'm just going to give a brief overview of this.
Ms. Stevens, let me ask you to begin by introducing yourself and telling us about your background and experience in land use planning law, please.
Okay. My name is Shelley Stevens, and my experience in land use planning is a short period in the private sector and then about two years with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, which most of y'all are familiar with. And then I've worked for nine years for Caldwell County as the planning director as well. My degree is in public policy from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and then I have a master's in urban planning from UIUC. So, this is the first special use permit request of the year. The applicant is Jonathan Yates, with whom most of y'all are familiar on the board there because he's been here before. He is an attorney, and he's working for TowerCom, and TowerCom is working for Verizon. And just to give an overview of the site, which I'll show you here shortly, it's owned by John Daniel Cassavaux. The 35-acre site is. The applicant would like to have a 10,000-square-foot leased area on that site, 100 feet by 100 feet, which is standard in the industry. And the site is located in southwestern Caldwell County, so it's the southwestern quadrant of Caldwell County. Most of y'all are familiar with Clark's Chapel Road. It's at 3341 Clark's Chapel Road. And the specific site is wooded and also has grass and a field, and a very dilapidated shed is the only structure there. It's not usable. It is in the watershed-protected area of the county, but it's not in any flood hazard area or anything like that. The elevation at the site is 1,258 feet per the tower input data on the application. And the surrounding area is also zoned residential-agricultural, and it has mostly like residential homes and also some fields and wooded area. And so, this is our comprehensive plans future land use map, which many of you are familiar with, and it's created based on public input. It just, it shows various land uses and zoning types and where those are preferred by the public of Caldwell County in our comprehensive plan document that's updated approximately every 10 years. And again, this is in the southwestern quadrant in that light yellow, which is a low-density area, and our comprehensive plan does suggest uses such as cell towers for this area, low-density use. And cell towers are also legally allowed in every zoning district of our zoning ordinance and of our county with a special use permit. So, this is the site itself, the Clark's Chapel parcel, and the cell tower would be located approximately where you see that red dot. So, it would have a 30-foot utility easement that leads up to it from Clark's Chapel Road and 12 feet of gravel within that easement that they would maintain. They also have to get a DOT permit, which they already have, that's required before they get their special use permit, and that is for the entrance to the site. And their request is for a 195-foot tower, so it would be monopole style, like you see around here, and they would have room for three co-locators below Verizon on the tower. And then they would buffer everything at the base as required by the zoning ordinance. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know about that. And it's my professional opinion that they have met all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance at this time in order to get a special use permit, and they would also have to meet any conditions that are added at this meeting by the board, if any are added. Let's see here. And then just as a piece of information that people might want to know, before the planning board meeting, they had a few items they needed to add to their application. They have revised their application and added those, and both I and the county attorney reviewed them for accuracy and for compliance with the zoning ordinance, and they do meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. It was just stuff relating to the maintenance and removal agreement, the maintenance and removal language in the lease, the bond, which is important, that's for cessation of use and cleaning up the tower site. And then an address discrepancy, which isn't exactly a discrepancy, but they use two addresses, and there are two addresses on the site, but for clarity purposes, we ask that they use one address indicating the site throughout their documents. Those are the main things. And then since the planning board meeting, the only thing that's changed is a neighboring property owner did ask that they resurvey the site at the planning board meeting itself. So, they did have a line, a property line, resurveyed, and the property owners hired a surveyor, and so did the applicant, and they came to agree upon a slightly different property line, 18 feet away from the original property line, and this is the northern property line only. So, if you're looking at that, it's just that northern property line moved very slightly after that. And then the tower site itself would move 21 feet south, and that's the only change, and both I and the county attorney did review these changes, and they do not relate to the zoning ordinance requirements, and therefore, it is okay for the applicant to move forward in the process, but we just wanted to mention those changes. And then this is what the tower site looks like. There's a gate, and then once you enter the property, lots of grass and trees, basically. This is what the tower itself would look like with the eight-foot fence, green privacy slats, two rows of Leyland cypress, and barbed wire atop that. And then, as you can see in this aerial, the site's pretty much surrounded by trees as well. And the planning board's recommendation is approval contingent upon receipt of completed and correct required documents that I mentioned previously, and they did submit all of those, and they are complete and correct, so the planning board's recommendation is approval.
Does that complete your testimony, Ms. Stevens?
It does.
Mr. Yates, do you have any questions for Ms. Stevens?
Evening. My name is Frank Longest, and I'd like to make a statement.
All right. But at this time, do you have any questions that you want to ask Ms. Stevens?
No.
I'll give you a chance to speak in just a couple of minutes. Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Stevens?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Longest, if you would, and let the record show that Mr. Longest has been sworn, come up and identify yourself and tell us what you'd like to tell us about the application.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Frank Longest. I'm a North Carolina licensed attorney. Our firm accesses North Carolina Council for the applicant. I'm here for two purposes. Number one, since this is a quasi-public hearing, in case there's a need, I'm on standby to help the applicant. But the primary purpose of my presence is introduce to you Jonathan Yates, attorney from Charleston, South Carolina, the attorney for the applicant. I've known Mr. Yates for a number of years, and we in the cell phone industry know Jonathan as the cell phone guru. He's probably done hundreds of cell phone locations, special use permits in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, and Georgia. So, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Jonathan for the primary presentation for the applicant. Just as an aside, before I sit down, it's always a pleasure to come up Highway 18 and see the beauty of your area. It's really a beautiful area y'all are blessed to have. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Mr. Longest, does any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Longest? All right. Thank you. Mr. Yates, and let the record show that Mr. Yates has also been sworn.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lackey. Chairman, members of the board, good to be with you tonight. First and foremost, and I promise, I saw the agenda, I'm not going to wear you out tonight, I'll be brief, but I would be remiss if I didn't do one important thing. As Frank outlined to you, I do this work throughout the Southeast. I've been doing it since the mid-'90s, and I work with a lot of jurisdictions. What you do not find, what I found, always found in Caldwell County, and this is not my first one here, you have Shelley Stevens. She is incredible. I just want to highlight the professionalism, and you can't sneak anything by her. I'll tell you that right now. You're not going to, you're not going to get close to getting anything by her. But no, the professionalism, the friendliness, and the depth of knowledge. It makes my job easier. I just want to thank Shelley. I thank her so much. Tonight with me, I have Robin Clement of TowerCom, and I have our property owner, Danny Cassavaux. You've seen this property before. In 2018, Verizon came and got a smaller tower, 110-foot tower approved there and never built it. We're going to build this one. In talking to Danny, and I forget who he told me on the board at the time, said, "We'll approve that tower, but can you do it taller? We're back." And Verizon is back, and I apologize for the delay. Little background on the property, Danny bought it in 2016 from Jack and Joanne Price. Got about 35 acres. 12 acres in the front, he cuts hay. We're going to put the tower about 1,600 feet, as you saw, in the back. It's about eight-acre open field around there, the remaining 15-acre trees. As a tower site, absolutely perfect. We have 35 acres. We're able to achieve, Mr. Pastor Williams is here with us tonight, we're able to achieve about a 984-foot setback from his property. We are able to make all the setbacks. What we're doing tonight is a monopole. Couple key points here, it is being brought up for Verizon, but it's designed, not only for Verizon, for at least three additional broadband carriers, and we're hoping that once Verizon improves service out there, others will follow. Two parts to a tower. You have the tower itself, and then on the ground, we have the 60-foot by 60-foot compound, where we have space for all Verizon's ground equipment and the ground equipment of what we hope the three future co-locators there. We'll surround that, as Shelley touched on, we'll have an eight-foot fence. We put privacy slats on it, and then on top of the fence, we have three strands of barbed wires and anti-climate device, very expensive equipment in there, and then we'll come around the compound with two rows of Leyland cypress. If you're willing to approve us tonight going forward, Robin's crew will take about 45 to 60 days to get it up in the air, get the site built. A lot of that timeframe is the foundation setting, and then we can, the tower itself goes up in a day. After that, Verizon or any other carrier, they come out there approximately about once a month. All the equipment is now really operated remotely, but a tech will come out maybe once a month, maybe eight to 10 times a year, in a light truck, so we're not going to create any additional traffic on Clark Chapel Road. Sorry, I have a little bit of a cold. Another important finding here, the FAA has reviewed this facility. We're about 2.7 miles from Foothills Regional. We're 3.6 nautical miles from Lanny Field. FAA approved it, and they had two important findings. They found that it would be no hazard to air navigation, and further, they found it does not have to be illuminated, so no light on the top. So, if we're allowed to do this, if you see your way clear on this, we'll have a facility that doesn't create any noise, odor, lights, vibration, fumes, or glare. What does it do? For the folks around there, it improves both wireless voice, broadband, and to me, seeing the presence in the back of the room, one of the most important things, and I apologize, I do not have the statistics for this county, but in my home county of Charleston County, our consolidated dispatch on a monthly basis, about 84% of all calls into 911 come from a wireless device. It makes sense. You're in a mess, you're in trouble, you pull it off your hip. You don't have to go knock on the door like I did when I was 16 years old. That's what we're trying to do. Wireless is now called 21st century infrastructure. Some people call it the fourth utility. It is absolutely essential for the folks out there, and that's what we want to do. We hope with Verizon finally making this move, it's been the longest in six years since 2018, they make the move, we hope others will follow, we hope, we'll see, but again, we're just trying to provide infrastructure. Danny provided us with the perfect piece of property to do it, and Ms. Shelley gave us an incredible amount of her time and expertise to get to for you tonight. I thank y'all for your time. I'm here for any questions. Robin's here, any TowerCom questions? And Danny, he knows every inch of the property, so if you have any questions for Danny, he's right here as well. We thank y'all.
Mr. Yates, let me ask you something for clarification. You are listed as the applicant as attorney for TowerCom. What is the precise name of the entity to which the permit should be issued?
I'm going to pull that exactly. It would be TowerCom.
Or the, or dash.
And that's an IV. TowerCom, IB, B, as in boy.
TowerCom, IV.
B as in boy.
Is there a dash B?
Dash B, yes, sir.
I think I saw. And is that an LLC?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And in what state is that LLC organized?
Delaware.
So, if the board issues the special use permit, that should be the peremptee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Any member of the board have any questions for Mr. Yates or anyone that he has brought with him this evening?
No. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. At this time... At this time, I'll turn it back over to our chairman to close the hearing and entertain a motion.
All right. So, we'll close this portion of the public hearing, quasi-judicial hearing. And thank you, Mr. Lackey, for...
Chairman, if I may interrupt, I apologize. I would like to request that the application presented and being approved, and all the exhibits thereto, be incorporated as part of the record before you close out the public hearing.
All right.
Yes. And Shelley has all of that, yes.
Okay. So, we'll allow that in as part of the evidence, as well as the testimony received this evening. So, all right. Is anything else I need to do?
Entertain a motion?
All right. So, hearing all the testimony and everything presented in this matter, what is the pleasure of the board in adopting the approval of this cell tower this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the special use permit request for the cell tower that's been presented to us tonight.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? I would like to say thank you for following up and coming back into our county and building a cell tower. We commonly hear that within our group of the lack of sometimes having availability, especially in the internet side of things. And we know that's where it's all going is wirelessly. So, we certainly appreciate you being willing to come and erect this tower, and hope that you can get those other three carriers to come onboard with you, and enhance the availability over there. Because I know that North Catawba section, which is just a short piece from here, does have some issues with cell towers, and cell service. So, maybe this will help them quite a bit there, especially, I think, down where Commissioner Wilkie lives, and on down toward the river there. So, we're hopeful that all of this will help, and we appreciate everyone's effort in accomplishing that. And Mr. Cassavalle, thank you for allowing them to come. All right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, with the motion, is there any other comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So, thank you, folks, for being here, and safe travels home.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Shelley and I will try to have a written order for the board's approval by the next agenda. And Mr. Yates, if you would care to send a proposed order to Shelley, feel free to do so. Or Mr. Longest, either one?
All right.
Thank you guys for being here.
Appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
All right. So, that brings us to item four on our agenda, after we've done some shuffling around.
Yes, sir.
And that'll be our second reading of Emergency Medical Services Ordinance Amendment, the way I'm looking at that.
Correct, sir.
All right. So, Mr. Duncan?
So, this is the second reading of the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance Amendment. We did adopt this earlier with our ordinance updates and changes, but staff and our contracted legal counsel got a little overzealous on the amounts of insurance. And so, it was counter to our insurance policy that we have with our, that our insurance company requires us for liability, and naming us on liable for other policies. So, this returns it back to what it was, with general liability at $1 million per occurrence, and two million aggregate per year, and then for auto, $1 million, and then for officers, $1 million per occurrence and two million aggregate, and then umbrella policy, $4 million plus workers' comp. So, just returning the policy back to what it was before.
All right. So, hearing the recommendation of staff and our manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance Agreement, Amendment, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Emergency Medical Services Ordinance Amendment. All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, 65 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to our second reading of the franchise agreement with Miller Ambulance Services. Mr. Duncan?
Yes. Cape Fear Service is here doing DBA as Miller Ambulance Services. They would like to begin service point-to-point, starting July 15. They're in the contract negotiations now with Caldwell Memorial Hospital from UNC Health, and also have a contract next door with Frye Hospital. And they're already providing service in their area from one facility to another. You may see their trucks around quite a bit. This franchise agreement would allow them to start. It would be a three-year term. Our previous agreement was a one-year term to try it out, and then we renewed for a two-year term, but that service provider was unable to maintain adequate staffing here. Miller, I think, being based in our region, and already has an excellent track record, is adding two other amateurs. So, and I, on my vacation this past two weeks ago, I saw them on the road twice, all the way down and the other end of the state. So, I know they're running. And they're here if you have any questions. Also, our interim services, emergency services director's here as well.
All right. So, hearing the recommendation, anybody have any questions of the staff or Miller this evening? I know they were here last meeting and made a presentation. So, as required in the adoptions of our agreements and ordinances and franchises, we have to have a second reading, and that's what we're doing here this evening, just entertaining this a second time.
I do have, I do have one question. Maybe this is for Trevor. Are we, in this agreement, will we be, will they be taking over the hospice transports as well?
No, it's not.
Okay. Has that been discussed or talked about?
Yes.
Okay. Well, excuse me. Would that require a change in this agreement if they decide to go and do the hospice transports?
It would, but we also have a separate contract with hospice.
Okay.
So, we need to negotiate that first to make sure they have the capacity and everything's available for them.
Okay.
So, that would come first, and then amendment.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'll ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this franchise agreement with Miller Ambulance Services this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the franchise agreement with Miller Ambulance Services.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, man, for being here again this evening.
Thank you, guys.
So, we look forward to seeing you a lot now.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us then to item six, which is a second reading of our racetrack and drag strip ordinance amendment. And Mr. Duncan?
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, you have before you again this month, which is the second reading for modifying or amending the racetracks in Drag Strip Chapter of the Caldwell County Code of Ordinances. This is a ordinance that has a set term or a sunset on it through the end of the track year this year, which would be in December. You would have to renew or extend for the following season. What it does is allow for no more than four testing two events in a month, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. So, this would be no racing. There'd be no money taken at the gate, no crowd. This would only be for testing events where maybe one or two cars are out there making adjustments, doing a few laps, and then coming back in. It's been very popular amongst some of the larger teams to be able to come and test on a non-sanctioned NASCAR track, because if they're on a NASCAR track, then they have so many hours that they can, they're limited to. So, this allows them, I won't say they're cheating in NASCAR, but there's, you know, it's kind of like, if you're not cheating, you're not trying to win. So, it's a way for them to do more testing and bring more action and more racing to our community. And it does sunset, remember that. It's not an automatic renewal. You would have to renew it again sometime before the next season starts.
All right. So, hearing that, and again, approved at our last meeting, this is a second reading of this. Is there any other comments or discussion about it?
Mr. Chairman, I will say that a few weeks ago, I was, had the opportunity to meet Kevin Harvick, and he was very appreciative to our efforts to make to help there, because he's, these NASCAR teams can't test on NASCAR sanctioned tracks. So, he was very appreciative and asked me to bring that appreciation to the board.
All right. Anyone else? With that, then, I will entertain a motion to adopt the racetrack and drag strip ordinance amendment. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend this racetrack and drag strip ordinance. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That is one opposed. So, thank you, everyone, for that. Next is item for decision, and kind of a unique situation that we're moving into with our sheriff, Alan Jones, who has announced his impending retirement. And he is with us here this evening as well, but we have received a letter from the Republican Party, who had a meeting and made a nomination for the office to be filled in the unexpired term, if you will, and that tenure of about, I haven't got the number of months, but somewhere around two years, that the recommendation for our chief deputy major, currently Kevin Bean, to be appointed as our county sheriff. So, we've received that recommendation from the Republican Party, and as commissioners, we have to vote on that. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind. Also, as part of the statute, when changing sheriffs, that through appointment, we now are required to get a full disclosure statement of any criminal record that may exist for the potential candidate. That is a new North Carolina statute. I believe it's only been since 2012 or '14.
More recent than that.
Yeah. It's not been long. If you remember Sheriff Hagy, what it says is that Mr. Kevin Bean, our major, has had a criminal background check, and he has a clean criminal record. These fingerprints were processed by the North Carolina Bureau of Investigation and the Federal Bureau of Investigation, and the North Carolina Administrator Office of the Courts, that there is no felony convictions on his record, and he's went through all local and national criminal databases. So, you meet that statute, you have a copy of that at the desk.
All right. So, so he just looks like an outlaw. He ain't really one.
You said it.
All right. So, with all of that, I would like to make a motion that we approve the nomination of Kevin Bean for the office of Caldwell County Sheriff to be effective upon his date of swearing in, which is when our...
August 30th?
August 30th. Our current sheriff, Alan Jones, will officially retire on August the 29th, I guess, at midnight. How's that? Because I think this swearing in takes place on Friday morning, August the 30th. So, I'll make that in the form of a motion, and proud to do that, and appreciate the fact that we have continuity within our sheriff's office, that we can do this and move right along, and think things will just continue right down the path of an excellent path that they have for the past many years under Alan Jones. And we're going to have an opportunity in time to thank him for his time and service as well. But we had to do this in accordance with the general statute, so...
Before you take the motion, may I ask that you include with your motion that you've received the disclosure statement?
All right.
And so, it's included for the record.
My motion that we have received the disclosure statement, as required by North Carolina general statute, and we, well, has anybody asked the major if he's willing to do this?
We ain't, I don't think nobody's thought about that, actually.
I have been put into some positions that I wasn't ever asked before they did it, so...
Yes, one of them volatile positions right there.
All right. So, with that, I'll call the question, or I'll ask if anybody else has a statement you'd like to make prior to our vote.
I just, I know we're going to have an opportunity to thank the sheriff, but I want to go on the public record and tell you how much we appreciate Sheriff Jones and what you've done over the last 17 years as sheriff of the county, and however many years you've been in law enforcement. We've been very blessed to have a sheriff in this county who serves with integrity, never questioned anything, decision he's ever made, because I can assure you that it was made with integrity. He's a sheriff that I'm proud to call a friend. He's a sheriff that we're going to miss greatly. And thank you for your service, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Amen.
Yes, sir. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I too would like to say I've had the opportunity to work with Sheriff Jones and Major Bean, and be part of their agency at one point. And they were two great men, and we are certainly blessed here in Caldwell County to have the leadership there at sheriff's office, along with each and every one of our sheriff's deputies and members of the staff there. We just don't, we take it for granted sometime how blessed we are with the men and women that we do have. So, I want to thank you. And Sheriff Jones, it's been a pleasure to work with you, but it's also a pleasure to be your friend, and I appreciate you very much.
All right.
I would echo Commissioner Potter and Commissioner Wilkie's comments to say, Sheriff Jones, thank you so much for your friendship, many, many years. And I'm, I am, I'm humbled to call you my friend. And thank you for protecting our county and the men and women. And to Major Bean, with that shiny head right there, I can hardly see you. I'm thankful to call you my friend, too.
Yep.
And I've been on a couple of times where we've ridden in the patrol car, and we've shared a lot of good stories. And you said something at the Republican meeting that stuck with me, is that you want to be a sheriff that people can call you your friend, and you want to be a friend. Of course, you're going to uphold the laws and those things in our county. We know that. But you want to be, you want to be the citizen's friend, and I'm grateful for that. So, thank you, sir, and God bless you both.
All right. Well, I guess I better say something.
[laughing] I appreciate what you've done, and I look forward to working with Sheriff Bean one day. And I'm glad I get to see you on this side instead of on the other side. Yeah. Appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
All right. And I just, again, echo everything that's been said, Alan. And Alan and I started a career a long time ago at the city of Lenore. And I can remember when we were both younger men then. So, but he's come a long way, and I'm proud to be able to call him a friend as well. And looking forward to the opportunities with Major Bean, Kevin Bean. I too, like Commissioner Wilkie, worked at the sheriff's office at one point. So, they were all my bosses, including Jerry Simmons sitting there. So...
[laughing]
But appreciate our sheriff's office and everything they stand for and everything they do. And we got the best in the state of North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
And I firmly believe that with all my heart. And so, we thank you each one. So, I'll call the question then. All in favor of the nomination of Kevin Bean to the office of Caldwell County Sheriff, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. So... So, I'm going to get him up here if he wants an opportunity to speak. Kevin?
[inaudible] County manager, county clerk. I just want to thank you for your vote of trust. And I just want you and the citizens of Caldwell County to know that I'm dedicated to their protection and the protection of their property. And I look forward to serving the citizens. And like you said, I not only want to be the chief of law enforcement officer of the county, but I want to be the people's friend. And I'll have open door policy if anybody sees anything wrong with the sheriff's office. I can't fix it if I don't know it. So, just let me know. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Alan, I don't know if you want to speak now or not, but I'm not going, I'm not going blaze by it if you did. He's a man of few words, I will say that.
It's like he of her.
[laughing]
When he speaks, people listen.
Yeah, that's right.
I want to mainly thank each one of you, because we've come through this political, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Many years.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you guys' friendship. I know we, we've stood at the polls together. We've really worked hard, each one of you. And I just want to thank you for the support you gave the sheriff's office. We're excited about... We're excited about Major Bean. I don't think you'll have any trouble out of him, and...
We do, we'll call you.
That's what I was going to say, you do, give me a call. But I really appreciate everything you've done for me and the office, and as far as county government, because it's honestly been the best it's ever been, since I've been here 21 years.
Yeah.
It really has, and you guys have done that, and I really thank you for that. Thank you very much.
I would like to say, you know, we've been... I know our board has been one that, you know, lots of places went through defunding the police and this and that. That's something we didn't believe in, and we wanted to make sure we funded them to our best ability to do what...
And that's another reason why I thank you guys, because you never gave in, I really appreciate that, because it could have really made things hard here in Caldwell County for all of us, really. So thank you for standing tall.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm going to clap for him. All right, that brings us to our next item, and we have Ms. Mallory Keller with us this evening, and a presentation of a resolution of America 250.
Yes, sir, thank you for having me. Good afternoon. So all of you know that we applied for the America 250 grant a couple months ago, and we received that, so that's something exciting that we have to look forward to within... It's going to take place, it's going to be, of course, a process with any grant opportunity, but... So we look forward to getting that complete by 2026. So with that being said, and that's why, of course, it's the... We're going to be celebrating the America 250, so America's 250th birthday will be 2026. So I have a resolution for y'all in regard to that. So a resolution of Caldwell County, North Carolina, supporting the America 250 NC Committee for the United States Semi-Quintennial, or America 250. Whereas Roy Cooper, governor of North Carolina, created America 250 NC to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States and North Carolina's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas, America 250 NC has a mission to engage all North Carolinians in all 100 counties through their many signatures and officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the commemoration by inspiring future leaders and celebrating North Carolina's contributions to the nation over the last 250 years. And whereas, by adoption of America 250 NC's mission, Caldwell County Committee is officially formed to achieve the goals of America 250 NC. Now therefore, be it resolved that the county of Caldwell hereby endorses America 250 NC in its mission, and resolve the county of Caldwell officially establishes an America 250 NC Committee made up of a diverse group of citizens to work with America 250 NC on any and all activities. The participants of the Caldwell County Committee will strictly... Will be strictly voluntary roles, and there will be no compensation for participation. It is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the legislative delegation and the America 250 NC Committee adopted this day, this eighth day of July, 2024.
All right, thank you, Mallory. So hearing the resolution read, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting that this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve or accept the resolution for America 250 North Carolina Committee.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, so thank you, Mallory.
I appreciate that.
Are you chairing that committee? We'll point you, go ahead.
Speaking of voluntold.
So we're still in the works of establishing that committee, so we have until September. So we've reached out to, of course, all of the townships and municipalities to make sure that we have the exact people, the folks with the intelligence and everything that we need to conquer this, so it's going to be very nice.
And I'll mention the History Museum, because somebody from over there reached out to me about this a few months ago, so just make sure we include an invitation there.
We have, we've been in contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate that.
All right, so that brings us then to our consent agenda, unless I've missed something in all that. All right, so Mr. Dole, Duncan?
We have a new item number 10, which will be... I'm sorry, new item number nine, which will be the opioid settlement for Kroger. The total settlement for the country is 1.4 billion. What you're doing is adopting a resolution authorizing staff to execute all the necessary agreements that we do to have that settlement. It looks like it'll be about $40,000 for us over 11 years. It's one of the smaller settlements, even though 1.4 billion sounds a lot, once you spread it across all 50 states and North Carolina's 100 counties, it gets diluted pretty quick. So that'll be an option for us to be able to use those money to expand restart services or contract with nonprofits or whatever it is we need to try to continue to fight opioid addiction in our county. Item number 10 is budget revision. The EDC group applied for a Golden Leaf Grant for the Foothills Regional Airport. This is a grant that allows us to do further due diligence on a piece of property if we have a potential economic development client, or we want to build an additional hangar space, whatever it is that can be used out there, this could include geotechnical work, soil testing, et cetera. The local grant matches 14,500, and it matches with a $50,000 grant, and this will come from our sales tax revenue into EDC fund, so no general fund use for that. Also, the new number 11 is item, therefore, Terms of Agreement for an industrial property that the county would like to lease. It may be leased through our new EDC nonprofit, as we form that. The owner of the building is out of the country, and so we have a term sheet, we'll be working on that agreement, and that may come back to this board, or it may come back to the EDC, it depends on which way we utilize that. We've talked to y'all about that privately, and just wanted to make sure we had full authorization to move forward with the lease agreement with Kestrel Properties. Items, appointment for Mr. Ruben Chandler and Karen Cannon to the Board of Health, reappointment of Register of Deeds, Mr. Wayne Rash to our Board of Health, and appointment of Sherri Kincaid to the Regional Aging Advisory Committee, appointment of our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners voting delegate, Mr. Michael... Our vice chair, Michael Rose, has agreed to serve, and that will be August 8th through the 10th in Winston-Salem, and minutes of the June 10th meeting, and also the fireworks application for the Village of Cedar Rock for their July 6th fireworks. It was submitted on time, all the paperwork was complete, we failed to get it on the agenda in time, and that's on staff, so that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions of me.
All right, so hearing the recommendation of our county manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has...
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously, which brings us to adjournment. So do I hear a motion, we adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and everyone who's watching us by TV, and hope you have a good evening. Thank you.